Today is July 9. I am Vice Chair for the purpose of this meeting, James Valente. And this is the Brattleboro Planning Commission's annual organizational meeting. We have some new members. Mark Ethea. How's the pronunciation there, Mark?
That's right.
Okay. And Gary Stroud, both seated to my right. And Elizabeth McLaughlin starting her first term, even though it is not really her first term.
I've got two asterisks next to me.
Yeah, yeah.
What does that really mean?
That means that I first serve from February to June, filling a vacancy left by Kevin Maloney.
That's right.
He completed a term.
He completed somebody else's term, yeah.
So really, it's more like 1.5. But in any event, we'll get right to the election of officers with a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Clerk. And I'll preside over that election, I guess, and I'll see who presides over the rest of the meeting. Do we usually do Chair first, Rod?
Yes.
Okay. So are there any nominations for Chair?
I'd like to nominate Liz McLaughlin for Chair.
Okay. One nomination, Liz McLaughlin for Chair. Any seconds? Do we need a second, actually?
You know, I think you just need a nomination.
Just need a nomination?
Right.
Okay, never mind. Okay. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate James, to my right.
Okay. We have a contested election. Pretty exciting. Now, should I hand off to somebody else, Rod, if I'm one of the people, or what?
I think at this point, what I'd prefer, for everybody else's sake, is to actually have, first of all, find out if there's any other nominations.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Any other nominations? Okay.
And then, so there's two. So in a circumstance where there's two, it would be good for Commissioners to be able to hear a little bit from maybe both nominees.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
You want to go first or second?
Second.
Second, okay. So here's my sales pitch. I've been on this committee. It doesn't feel like I'm a senior member, but I was thinking about it before the meeting, and I think I'm in my second in seniority. It feels like we've got the whole committee turned over, doesn't it?
Yeah, I've been here the longest.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not even close to you, huh?
No, no.
No.
I'm the old, I'm the, I'm the good old boy, so to speak. I've been on since at least, um...
It's, it should say right here.
When did you come on, Rod? 2009?
February 2008.
Yeah, so I came on in 2007, in the fall, August 2007.
Yeah, so you've got two years more experience than me, so...
Yeah.
I've been on the committee for some...
But that's the case this sheet is from.
Well, no, I came in filling somebody else's term also.
So you should have one asterisk.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
If that's how she's doing it. We never used to do it that way, but so...
Well, anyway, so I've got some experience, and I've seen how things work a little bit. And, um...
13, yeah, James, he came in.
You know, unfortunately, a lot of that was our fluvial erosion hazard zoning attempt, which ended in failure. The Select Board didn't adopt it, but I have been here for the drafting of a, of a set of regulations, so I have that experience. I sit on the DRB, and I'm a lawyer. And by virtue of those two things, I watch people try to weasel their way out of zoning regulations, and sometimes I try to help them do it, which maybe is not a good thing. But if it's our job to write the regulations, and we're going to be doing subdivision regs next, and updating them for the first time in 40 years, I think I can provide useful input on how to write them in such a way that they are effective, that they carry out the intent of whatever we want the regulations to do. And my skill is with little details and laws, and that's, you know, that's what I do. So I think that I can do a good job with that. I like to run a pretty quick meeting, as quick as I can, and make sure everybody gets to talk in that framework. And my attendance has been less than satisfactory lately, because I had a baby and all this various other stuff, but I think that if you guys vote me in for Chair... Oh, this is good timing. Tell me that's you and not me, Jim.
It's not me.
Oh, my God.
Couple of chairs.
Oh. Boy, talk about your worst campaign speech ever, moment, huh? If you vote me in, I'll be here, and I'll work hard, and the reason I joined this committee is because I have a real interest in writing ordinances that preserve the good parts of Brattleboro and look to prevent some of the bad things that we see. You guys hear me in my curmudgeonly way complain a lot about things that have happened in the past, and I really feel a love for this town, and a sadness when I look at things that have not gone the right way, you know, destroying the old library, stuff like that. That's why I'm here, and that's what I'll try to do, and I've lived here my whole life, and I don't know if I'm always up to the task, but I think I can bring a pretty strong perspective to it. So vote for me. Thank you.
Go Liz.
Well, I'm a planner, which is generally identified as being a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners for, I guess, almost 30 years. And I have not always lived in Brattleboro. I choose to live in Brattleboro. We moved five years ago. But I do have a wealth of experience of various other towns, and how they did things in other places, and, you know, the professional planning practice and so forth. So I really value being on the planning board, and I think I can contribute. The reason that I would like to be the Chair is so that I can hopefully help forge a consensus and give proper direction to the staff in terms of, you know, what we all, as a commission, are choosing to do. Basically, that's it. Thank you.
I have a question. Does the, does the Chair meet beyond the planning meetings with you guys? Or is it...
It's something that's different. I met very regularly with Kevin, the Chair, previous to Gary, on at least monthly basis, and planned out what was going to happen in pretty close detail. And then typically with Gary, depending on what was on, particularly in fluvial erosion hazard or other zoning ordinance changes were on, we would meet for a couple of hours at least a month, sometimes a couple of hours a week, to just do organizational stuff and background stuff. And so it varies, and it's a choice to some extent of the Chair, you know, it's something that Chair and I would work out. But there is that expectation, that there is some extra work, I guess.
Can I comment on the candidates? Is that acceptable?
Doesn't bother me.
Or why I nominated Liz?
Anybody can comment or ask questions as far as...
I can't hear you.
Sorry, anybody can comment or ask questions as far as...
Yeah, it might, yeah. It might be good to both, you know, to think of comments or questions to ask, but that's okay, yeah. I mean, I would say it's up to the candidates, and they seem to be comfortable.
I mean, that's the perils of life in the political spectrum, right?
I guess one of the reasons I nominated Liz is because of her planning experience and what she brings to us. We all bring what we bring to the commission, but partially because Liz is, her track record of being here, for me, that's really crucial. And I know that, James, you have a lot of commitments. You're on the DRB, and I know you're part of some other committees in town and in the community, and I guess I have some concerns just about, about that. I don't have concerns about your leadership role at all, either of you, but what my bigger concern is, is your attendance, and I guess I have some doubts about that, and I hear that you're committing to do it, but just with all those things, and your new baby, and all that stuff, I just, I can't, you know, I don't know, you've commented about it, that you'll be a shift there, but you're a pretty busy guy, and I would like to, for me, I would like to know that our Chair has a real commitment to put the planning commission first and not be overcommitted in their life. And so I don't know if you want to comment to that, or Liz, I don't know what else Liz is, does with her time, but I know she's here a lot.
That's the sad part.
Well, yeah, that's right. I had kind of a rough spring this year, when I had my baby, and a bad spring last year when I took the bar exam. I don't plan on doing either again.
Famous last words.
Right.
Well, I think, it's not, yeah.
Pretty comfortable, about one of those not happening.
Yeah, well, that's all. Jeez. I, one of the people who helps administer things in the town contacted me about that recently with some concern about it.
Yeah.
And I admit, I've just, I missed a lot of meetings this spring. It's not good. And it's particularly not good on the Planning Commission, where you sort of need some continuity, because you go from section to section over the weeks, and...
Well, at least on the town plan, yeah.
You're absolutely right about that, and you're probably, well, you are also correct that Liz is more qualified than me, at least in her planning background.
Yeah. I appreciate that, the experience you bring, being on the DRB.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think I have my own...
But I think you can still bring that.
Lovable qualities.
Yeah. I don't want to belabor.
No, that's all right, that's all right. But to address what you said, so this person said that they were concerned about my attendance. I thought about it, and I talked to Rod, I talked to Gary, and before I decided to go for Chair, I asked Gary about the commitment, and I just realized I'd rather double down than continue to miss meetings, and this is a good way to do it, but...
What's double down mean? I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Oh, that's in poker, when you're not sure what to do, and you decide to throw some more chips on the table. Sorry. It's also a Kentucky Fried Chicken sandwich. But I just, I'd like to reaffirm my commitment, because I'm not pleased with myself with my performance this spring.
I'm not meaning to sound critical, I just have concerns.
No, 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 but I think, I think the planning, it's, it's, you're absolutely right, and it's, I want to be contributing more to writing the zoning ordinances, and whether I'm Chair or not Chair.
Yeah.
I, I was, like, I'm here for...
Thanks.
Sure.
Hey, Rod, how, how important is it that the Chair be well-versed in planning? I mean, is it, is it more about running a meeting, do you feel, or is it about knowing the principles of what goes into planning?
From my standpoint, and in my experience, both as a Commissioner or Board Member, and then also somebody working to that Board, I have experienced highly effective attorneys, mostly in settings where the one body reviews development applications as well as those long-term planning. And so in some settings, that's what's done. And I've enjoyed being on Boards and working for Boards and Commissions where the Chair has been, the longtime Chair, has been an architect or a design professional as well. And I've worked on Boards, worked for Boards and Commissions where planners have been present. So I'd say, on balance, it's not so much a choice between these two professions. I think that planners, it's an aspect of being an effective planner that you can run an effective meeting. I think we've got...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just, I don't...
We've got, you know...
Well, when I, when I look at what I acknowledge Gary for, it's leadership skills and his knowledge, but his fairness in dealing with issues as the Chair, and as the Chair, people have to deal with the public that comes, and even just being fair, moderating a meeting among the hall of us, and keeping the agenda moving, and...
Yep. So I don't think there's necessarily a difference there. Hey, it's what I do.
Do we traditionally vote by ballot, or voice?
You know, I was just looking for guidance in the bylaws about that, and I think we are supposed to follow Robert's Rules.
So then...
Robert's Rules is a secret, eh?
Okay.
So we can do a couple of things.
We've never had, what I've done, we've never had two.
Right. So we could, I was just thinking about how to do it, then.
I would suggest a secret ballot, because I feel like we work more effectively together afterwards, if no one has to worry about who voted for whom.
True.
Is anybody, is everybody okay with that?
So what, yeah, but I was, if that was the way that people were going to go, I was going to suggest that we, um...
It does say by, here on Section 10, Page 3, it says, "Voting shall be by voice," but we can do it however we want, I think.
I think, I think secret ballot just does less, it was kind of safer for everybody. I don't know. If anybody wants to do it.
Want to vote on how we should vote?
Vote on how we should vote?
Yeah, so get the vote carried away.
All right. I'm going to dictate that we're going to do secret ballot, and perhaps my last action as Chair.
So do you want seven different pieces of paper? Is that what you'd like?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Timberley, I think you're the ranking person who didn't nominate or is not running. So you want to be the counter?
Rod can be the counter.
I can count, a little bit.
Oh, Rod, yeah, yeah.
They teach you that at Westminster?
It's kind of, it's kind of challenging. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go the other way.
Two.
I think he's saving paper.
Yeah.
Is that our meeting on the, on the monitor there? This time? Because last time it was somebody else.
Still plenty. I'm not business.
Six.
Oh, really?
That should be enough. There you go.
He has to be best present even in general.
Thank you.
Has there a hat this goes into, or something? How's that work? Who opens up the...
Right.
Secrets, okay.
How about we fold it, put it in front of us, and Rod will come collect it?
Present it, okay. Can I even have a little bag?
It's now our initial稿, and not our initial稿, but an intro.
Okay.
I have a little fit.
All right.
Now, is this an election every year? How does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
The appointment cycle is basically July 1 to June 30, and so...
For the officers.
For the officers, for all Board members and Commissioners. And so sometimes, when you're, but when you're appointed, you're appointed, you can be appointed for a period longer than, than a year.
So you're allowed two terms, basically, as President? Or Chair, should I say? Or, as far as voting, how often can you be Chair? Is it twice? I mean, I did Policy Council at EES, I was President for two terms, so I don't know how.
And we have a Chair and a Vice Chair, and then next year, this time, we'll vote them all again.
He wants to know how many you can keep.
How often can you run?
Like, is there a term?
Oh, oh.
Is there a set term about you can be Chairperson?
No, I don't think so.
I was looking at that, and see, there's a set term.
What's EES?
Early Education.
First Street, First Street.
Yeah, I was Policy Council President for two years there, and did healthcare advisory, and then I came, then, that's why I was wondering how you do your...
Yeah, I think it's anyone, I don't think there's any rules.
No, not here.
How many years is Gary Chair?
Three.
How many years is Gary Chair?
Uh, three.
So Kevin was a bunch too.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a nine-year limit.
Oh, I think he was here fourteen years.
It's conceivable that he could have done...
It just seems like...
Well, he could have started and stopped and gotten back on, I don't know. Was Rod on, I mean, was Gary only on for nine years, Rod?
I think he was eight, and then one way up.
Maybe he was on something else.
All right. So I have a result. And what I propose to do now is to actually have somebody move a motion to appoint the Chair. And so maybe Jim, given that it's James who got the majority of the votes, you'd like to move a motion.
I'd like to move a motion to appoint the new Chair, based on the vote, I guess.
You can use James's name, that would be really good.
Oh, I would like to move, oh, I see, okay, I would like to move a motion for James to be the new Chair.
James Valente.
James Valente, yes.
I'd like to second that.
Not James Razzino.
Thank you. You have to ask for a discussion.
And somebody, and does somebody want to second that? James, you're...
She's seconded it.
Liz seconded it.
Okay, all right.
Oh, Liz seconded it.
So I'll do this. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay.
Any opposed? Okay. Well...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and Liz, my term's up in one year, so if they don't like me, I could have another show.
Just so we know the impeachment process.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so before, before we move off this, and now, we have the onerous task of identifying who the Vice Chair is going to be.
Well...
I nominate Liz.
I nominate Liz, oh, okay.
So we have a nominate, so we have a nomination for Liz?
Any discussion?
Or any other nominations?
Or any other nominations? See, I'm already a dictator here. Okay, hearing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Perfect.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Nope.
Okay.
And remind me what we do about Clerk. Is that Julia?
No.
That's the DRB that does that?
Um...
With Brian?
We voted them in last time, but...
Right.
Liz, I think.
I think I was the Clerk.
Yes.
But it's not really...
This is sort of a, this is sort of an old and daisy kind of thing, so you'll see in the bylaws that there, offices are identified as a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Clerk, and that you're, that they're elected at, by the Commission at the annual meeting for a term of one year. And then it says, "In the event the Clerk shall be absent from any meeting, the officer presiding shall designate an acting clerk." We don't do that, and the reason why we don't do it is that we've kind of quasi-automated the whole process. So really, the role of the Clerk is, in large part, to do responsibilities of not actually writing the minutes, but ensuring that they get distributed, and that's something that staff takes on. So, and if you look in the, in the bylaws again, you actually don't even see a job description for the Clerk.
Is it on top of Page 2?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, three, it's three items. To keep the minutes, to give us all notices required by law or these bylaws, and to be custodian of Commission records. So these are all things that are actually undertaken by the Office, the Planning Office. So it would be useful, I think, for, you know, ultimately for legal reasons, to identify the Clerk, but I can reassure whoever that person is, that we're not really going to make them do those things on a monthly or biweekly basis.
Did you do lots of things, Liz, in your capacity as Clerk?
Not a thing.
So a nomination for Clerk, then?
I nominate Carolina. I mean, if there's anybody who should be in charge of the minutes, it's you.
But I'll accept the nomination, but not that.
And it's a, it's a nice recognition of your seniority as the most experienced committee member, so that's my nomination.
Any other nominations?
Okay.
Okay, you're going to vote on that?
So I move to nominate Carolina as our Clerk.
Let's see.
Okay.
Do we have to vote?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
No opposed, no abstentions? Okay.
That's great.
So...
I think with that, James, we've reached the end of the organizational meeting.
We don't have to do a review of bylaws?
Oh, actually, yes, you could do the review of bylaws. It's typically something that we include. So for those of you who've read through the bylaws as part of your preparation for the meeting, it's an opportunity to identify something that you think is outdated or something, or that you might like to have changed. They were, I should add, they were revised in 2009. Fairly substantial at that point.
Yeah. No, we did a big goal.
Well, does anybody have any suggestions for the bylaws? Okay, hearing none.
I think they're fine.
Actually, I do.
Oh.
Should have taken away.
So if we're using Robert's Rules of Order, then I would like, I think we should change the Section 10 on voting to reflect Robert's Rules, which is secret ballot. But is this all voting? All?
Oh, God.
At all meetings, the Commission, each member of the committee should be, gets one vote, voting shall be by voice? Yeah, no, that would be too, that would be too cumbersome for...
You could say or, and we could have the option for times when we might choose to have a secret ballot.
Right. Yeah, maybe I'm being too petty.
I think it's part of the public record, like, when you watch the Select Board meetings, when they vote on something, you get to see who votes where, and that's important.
Yes, I agree with that. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I retract my recommendation.
I think the only instance where it becomes uncomfortable or difficult is the one I was just talking to.
Right.
Okay.
We amended that ourselves.
Any...
Discussion was you?
Anybody else?
It was my own vote.
Okay, so hearing no more comment on the bylaws, let's get to our agenda review. Rod, has our agenda stayed the way it's been?
Um, yeah, I think, sure.
Okay. In that case, let's go to the minutes of our last meeting, June 20...
I'm going to accept the minutes of the meeting of June 25, 2012.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question on a minute. Does that go into this discussion topic?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm looking at the very first one. Well, I guess it would be letter F.
Yep.
So we discussed this area across from Three Stones, and there was discussion of wanting, I guess there was discussion of wanting to improve walkability, and did we actually, as I was sort of reading, reading through the stuff this week, it looks like we are putting in the town plan that we're going to keep that area across from Three Stones, and we want to make that residential rather than mixed use. Is that, was that decided, or was it just discussed, and we didn't make a final decision?
It was decided.
It was decided.
It was decided to only keep it residential.
It was decided to recommend to only keep it residential in the town plan.
To have it be a recommendation in the town plan.
Nothing...
To have it be a recommendation in the town plan.
Yep.
Nothing will actually change unless we take it up, the ordinance, so...
Okay.
So to go through the steps?
Yes.
That, that item reflects the discussion of the last meeting, and the consensus of the last meeting was to pursue having the, that area of Canal Street zoned residential. And there was a pretty detailed discussion that went with it. So tonight, we're in the process of voting on the latest draft of the town plan with a view to having it ready to warn for public hearings. So if, that, that statement, if that statement holds true, which is what we expect here given the minutes, then the way the Land use chapter describes what's to happen to that section of Canal Street is that it will be changed from its current zoning to a new zoning designation residential. And then that will be part of the draft town... Um, and then that will be part of the draft town plan, and that will be part of the discussion presumably of the two public hearings held on the draft town plan by the Planning Commission. And then if it survives that discussion, and you as a planning commission still don't see any need to change it away from residential to something else, it goes on to the Select Board, where there'll be two subsequent public hearings, and it could be a topic of conversation there also. If, if it doesn't attract any attention, or no one else wants to change it, and the town plan is adopted with the commitment that that part of Canal Street be rezoned residential, then at the point where we were voting on the amend, the new zoning bylaw, it comes up yet again, and there'll be two public hearings here, and I dare say, and at least two public hearings at the Select Board. So, what I'm trying to lay out for you is, to some extent, to sort of paraphrase it, don't sweat the details right now. I mean, what I'd say is the general impression or the general conviction of the group has been to have this as residential, and there's clear reasons and unseated why. But we are realistically three years away from that decision becoming cast in stone.
And that's true of...
And that's true of both things. So, if there is bitter dissent, you know, the part of the public or the planning commission comes to understand that they've overlooked something, and they wish to change that designation back, then there's plenty of opportunity to do that, but...
Okay.
Yep. Does that help, James? The other James, actually.
Let's keep him, Jim, and me, James, that's easy.
Yep, okay, good. All right, so we're good?
Is that okay, Jim?
Yep.
No, I want to be JB.
Yeah, we're gonna have a new rule, actually, if there was one thing that we'd do in the bylaws, it would be that you can't, you can't have the same initials as somebody else, but, you know, it's all right.
We can find it out. So, uh, that said, we were talking about the minutes. Sorry, I just lost my place a little bit there. And, uh, is there anything, anybody wants to change or review? Okay, so, let's have a motion to approve them. Oh, sorry, 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 excuse me. Let's have a vote. We're all new to this. Uh, all those in favor of approving the June 25th, 2012 minutes?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Passes seven, zero, zero.
Did we do agenda review?
We did. And we didn't change anything.
Do you want to retroactively change something?
Did you want to?
Well, I just would like a report on the, on the T-PAG meeting, and I don't know where that would come.
Oh, oh, that's a good point.
Let's do an announcements, I mean, we're right there anyway.
Yeah.
What are those initials, James?
Oh, I'll get to that.
Town Plan Advisory Committee that met.
Group.
Advisory group that met to talk about the town plan, the 25th or something in June, or something like that.
Are we, are we at announcements, James?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. I actually don't have any other announcements, um, right now. You know, with workshops or anything such as that. It was, the Town Plan Advisory Group met. So for people who weren't on the, I can actually say that many people now who weren't on the commission back in, um, 2009, when we started the process of rewriting the town plan. One of the things that we set out to do right at the beginning was to, um, form another group to assist the Planning Commission in discussing things such as the structure of the actual document, the topics or areas that it should encounter, how the Planning Commission should undertake public outreach for the process of drafting the plan, and then what we, the Planning Commission should do when it comes to actually presenting that information. So, it was an effort to, um, identify a broad cross-section of the community, um, of people, but, but people for the most part not involved in municipal government and not involved in the planning process. So, a sort of different set of eyes and ears for the Planning Commission to try and ensure that, um, the public participation process and the document were gonna be more effective than they otherwise might be. So, back in 2010, I think, the Select Board appointed the Town Plan Advisory Group. And one other detail here is that none of the people who are members of the Town Plan Advisory Group were representatives of some other group, so you didn't have anybody on that body who were representing the school system, or, um, business owners, or tenants, or anything. They were carefully selected to actually each have multiple roles in the community, and just have lots of experience and background, uh, in community matters. So that was a key part of what the Town Plan Advisory Group was. Staff, Sue and I, um, and Gary, um, participated in the Town Plan Advisory Group meetings. They went, um, for about a year, uh, discussing various substantive issues, as well as design and content issues. And it was there that the format for the, the original format for the chapters was developed. And it's since evolved a wee bit, um, but the idea of the, um, principal statement came from Town Plan Advisory Group to some extent, and then the structure of the goals, um, of policies, goals, and action steps being, um, present at the front of each chapter was another thing that was developed there. So, we had promised the Town Plan Advisory Group, um, that we would reconvene that group once we had a draft of the entire town plan to review. Not all of the members were able to, the original members of T-PAG, as it's now known, were able to get together again, but there was a quorum, and Sue, um, staffed that meeting, and, um, in gen, and benefited, um, quite a bit from their individual comments, and then their general perspective, and the general perspective was that it was, that they were very, found the plan, you know, exciting and good, so, we got favorable feedback, which was useful.
For those of you, um, who are new, um, also, um, people who came through the year, Maggie Barton-Hagan was here, Kate Anderson was here, a number of people on the T-PAG came to some of our meetings and gave feedback as we worked on certain chapters also. Just so you know that. Or, or emailed it, emailed it in.
When you see stuff in here, I'm just giving this to you guys for your benefit, that indicates like, a set of things that the public wants. It comes from T-PAG bringing people in to these events and taking surveys, having people list their concerns and sort of vote up and down what's most important to them, so... They've done a lot of very, very helpful work. Any other announcements?
I wonder, but the Connecticut River Commission and the Wyndham Regional Commission, under the announcements, was they, can you do this, I guess maybe it was like, maybe, overall, give me a little...
I'm gonna use that question to announce that I believe there is an informational meeting about the Connecticut River Commission this Friday with, um, what's the group? Do you know what I'm talking about? The breakfast group that meets at the seniors' center.
It's a, they're talking about the West River Trail, Citizens Breakfast, the West River Trail this week.
Not quite the same thing.
No.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I must have misread the...
You know, there was another meeting about the West River Trail at the Marina a couple weeks ago.
Right.
And it's a pretty interesting trail, I mean, it's gonna go all the way up to, like, Westminster, and then want to go down to, like, the train station.
It starts at the...
It's gonna go out Route 30.
On the other side of the river where the old train tracks were?
Oh, Route 30?
That's awesome.
It'll probably connect, have a connector to the, uh, the other trail, but, um, it's gonna follow the old train bed, the, the train that...
Yeah, they negotiated the, from the railroad property...
In this western, southern chunk, it's always been, uh, hard to get, and they find, I guess they got all their permissions and donations, or whatever.
There's a really cool house on that trail that I always wanted. Um, so Gary, I didn't answer your question at all. As a matter of fact, I deflected everybody's attention from it, so Rod, maybe you can do better job.
Expound on that just quickly.
Okay, just to, to add a little bit of detail to the West River Trail project, it's been going on for a very long time.
He was asking about the Connecticut River Commission.
Let me, let me just nail that too, because there's a bit of dissonance there too. So it starts actually at Townsend, at, uh, town of Townsend, near the Townsend Dam. And that section is through Bull Mountain, State Forest is pretty well complete. Um, and then the section that remains undone is a section through Dumeston and, and Brattleboro. And so conceivably, you could, once this was completed, ride or, or hike, uh, on the trail, which would be the old rail bed all the way from here to Townsend, which is a pretty considerable distance. Um, so that's that one. The, what you would've seen in the packet, um, previously, Gary, the, um, Connecticut River Joint Commission is a body that is, um, established by statute both in Vermont and New Hampshire. Um, and it governs the, um, development, um, and, um, conservation of the, of the Connecticut River. And so it's made up of a series of, um, committees, uh, taking sections of the river. Brattleboro is in the Wantistiquet Subcommittee Section, so that's named for the hill over the river. And it goes from basically, uh, the Massachusetts, Lamont, and New Hampshire border all the way up to Windsor. And then there's another subcommittee that's responsible for the section from Windsor through, uh, past Hanover, and then yet two more, I think, between here and the Canadian border. The Connecticut River belongs effectively to New Hampshire. The New Hampshire border starts on the High Water Line on the west side of the river.
Right.
For things as basic as modifying a bridge, or upgrading a bridge, or updating a bridge, or something similar to that, the states have to get together and figure out how that's gonna be done. And then there are issues to do with the Clean Water Act, uh, the federal legislation and...
Environmental, EPE.
Environmental regulations. That means that large-scale development projects on either side of the river are reviewed by both sides of the river, basically, for, with a view to their environmental impact. And so, um, it, as an organization, has gone through, like any other organization, sort of, you know, peaks and troughs in terms of its, um, activity levels, it's been rejuvenated to some extent over the last year or so. And there are, um, posts on the Wantistiquet Subcommittee for Brattleboro Residence. And we've been taking nominations, and I think Liz took, took one of those, so... Um, so it meets, I think, at the minimum quarterly, more frequently if there's development projects to be reviewed. So that's that one.
So you'll meet now in the meetings?
I hope so, yeah. I hope we find it.
Are they still looking for people, or did Liz take the spot that's there, are they looking for more people?
Two spots.
There's, there were two spots available. And I don't know if any, I can't remember, Cole, I know that Liz...
There wasn't anyone else here.
Ran. There wasn't anyone else in this group. We've asked the Conservation Commission, I guess I need to check to see whether somebody from the Conservation Commission took one of those posts, and then there's, so there's two formal posts, and then there's seven alternate posts. And so Sue and I have also discussed the possibility that, given the development application nature of it, that I, you know, that we would probably, we'd be comfortable taking one of those other seats if, if, you know, and then we can just rotate it. So, um...
Are you interested?
Um, no.
I guess the reason why I'm in town so little that I'm having trouble just meeting my existing teachers.
Yes, but no, yeah, okay.
All right, to reach your point, I asked that those is not conflicted with other meetings, that's not something, so, since you mentioned, I was gonna ask that it was quarterly.
Right.
Meetings.
Yeah, I think, I'm fairly sure they're, they're quarterly meetings, I need to confirm that. And then the other thing is the Wyndham Regional Planning Commission. The Wyndham Regional Commission is the regional planning commission for roughly Wyndham County. It has 27 towns, and it's not exact, an exact match for Wyndham County, there's a couple of towns, um, from Windsor County that are in the area. Um, it's the regional planning agency, it has, its role defined in statute by the state. And, uh, its office is on Main Street in Brattleboro. Um, and we work with them closely on issues of shared interest, and we use their services, particularly GIS and mapping services extensively. And each member town of a regional planning commission in the state makes a contribution to the budget of the regional planning commission, based on population size. And in each town has two commissioners that they can appoint to the Wyndham Regional Commission. And Jim has been a commissioner in the past, and, um, Dora is currently a commissioner, and I think we need to fill...
Are you replacing her?
Oh, Timberley. Timberley, Timberley is, Timberley is Jim's replacement.
Yeah.
So there you go.
Now, this, this is helpful, but, um, I'm, I'm mindful that we have the final draft of the town plan that we want to get to. And is this, can I...
This is actually something I could probably speak on.
Yeah, you should just give us an email or a phone call, or come by or something, and we can explain the stuff.
Thank you.
Um, so, are there any other announcements?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, and we're not gonna have any public comment here, I'll note, because there's no members of the public at our meeting tonight. So, I think we ought to move right along to our review of the final draft of the town plan.
Oh, we're doing that, um, at the last meeting, there was a conversation somewhere about, um, it was in the minutes, about, um, having an acknowledgement of the beautification in some, some chapter, I forget which chapter it was.
Yeah, actually, Sue and I talked about that, um, I confess I was in a drug-induced state.
But anyways, um, we were talking about before and after pictures, and I just wanted, I'm just gonna pass this down the line. This is the, the after picture of the, of the Gateway Garden. You can pass it down, or don't, just pass it back up.
So, and we, and we actually made mention of it in multiple chapters, is the way we approached it, that's what I was getting at. That's the way we resolved it.
Why don't you put that purple border in your picture?
I went to Wal, I went to Walgreens, and you could pick borders, and I was like, whoa, what's this?
Who was, um, who was the woman who spearheaded this last year?
Martha Ramsey.
Yeah, we, I think we ought to recognize Martha Ramsey, because I remember she came to one of our meetings and said, "I'm gonna do this, and whoever wants to help me can come help me."
When everybody else said, "We're not, we can't die."
Yeah, that's right, and gosh darn it.
Yeah, I do.
We got a picture of a nice flower in it, that's great. So, the planning commission recognizes Martha Ramsey.
That's great.
So, uh, Gary's way of doing discussion was generally to move from that end to this end. And I'm gonna continue that, I don't want you guys to think I'm discriminating against the new members here, but, uh, maybe I'll start a zigzag, just so we get even. Let's start with you, Carolina, is there anything you think...
Well, I have a question, um, was every, in, in the handouts we got, um, every chapter, I mean, because some of the chapters were just, the final draft were done as late as May, in last month, and then yet there's still another ones, and I didn't get a chance to read through them all. Are there major changes in each chapter, is that why we got them?
Yeah.
Because I thought some of them, like, energy was done ages ago.
It might be useful for us to, for, it might be useful for you, for me, to describe what work has gone on in the office between the last version and this version. And then maybe, if, if you don't mind, James, I might actually suggest a way of approaching this. I think, um, so let me, let me start off with the process. So, the last couple of meetings, Sue and I were present, and Sue brought in the, um, the post, the big oversized Post-it notes, and what we did was record each of the comments or questions that commissioners had on, on each of the individual chapters. And where we could divine a consensus, and I mean divine, um, from you, we implemented the suggested change. And we also took some feedback and comments from the members of T-PAG, and some members of the audience as well. And what we did was then actually boil all that stuff down from the oversized Post-it notes into a, just kind of a Word document, um, which we've now memorialized in, in the form of a PDF, so that it's part of the, the guts of our review process. And then Sue and I set about making the changes. Sue worked on the majority of the chapters. I worked on the ones that I was responsible for drafting in the first instance. And what we did, um, was identify, for instance, to take one example, and I'll use Gary, because he's not here. Gary had some comments, for instance, about biomass and biofuels that touched on multiple different chapters. And he wanted, he was, he was asking for or seeking some amendments in more than one chapter about that. So, that touched natural resources, energy, economic development, and agriculture. And so in an instance like that, just one, just one comment or observation from him, which was a good one, which was, I think there should be more emphasis on biomass, um, and biofuels, and alter, and, and that form of renewable energy, that triggered minor amendments in each one of those chapters. And so, this... And so this version that you got before you incorporates all of those changes suggested in the meetings that we held reviewing the previous draft. That being said, it's my understanding that we've not seen, that you have not seen the introduction before?
No.
Or the implementation chapter? Or the demographic profile? So what I would propose, it would be really fabulous if we could get to the point by, in an hour or a bit over an hour, where everyone is in total agreement that this version of the town plan is good enough to go forward. Failing that, it might be good at some point to sort of check in on the progress that we're making and be very clear about what's left out for the subsequent meeting in July, the second meeting in July, which would be the last meeting that we would be very, that we would be comfortable with in terms of, let me say that more carefully. The next regularly scheduled meeting is the second one in July. And that will be as late as Sue and I would be comfortable with going for a, an approval of the final draft of the town plan for scheduling reasons to do with further field.
Have we, have we sort of warned, warned the public yet?
No, that's, and that's, and that's precisely why. So.
So if we finish tonight, you'll be able to do your warnings. But if we don't, you'll have to delay.
Yeah, and we haven't done it yet. But we could, and we'd push it off a little bit. And that's not devastating to the schedule at this point, but much later than, we don't want to end up being in August and still trying to resolve a draft of the town plan. But acknowledging a couple of things. There's two new members tonight. We've spent a lot of time on the organizational staff. We want to get clear about where we're going. And that there have been significant changes in land use that still need to be reviewed, I think. And in particular, I would say.
Different than, like, from May?
Yeah, I think that shows, that shows the work from May is the way I'd say it. And then the format of the, of the implementation chapter, it's pretty dense. I'm not sure how many of you have actually reviewed it, but it's a multi-page table, right? So it's going to take some time to go through. And I'm okay with that. And I think it's important that we do go through it. And I think that, in conjunction with the introduction, really important kind of bookends to the plan. And so the tone, to some extent, of the plan is set in the introduction. And then the actual commitments that we need to the plan, you know, to implement the plan are made in the implementation section. So maybe we should just start off, if it's all right with you, James, start off discussing the introduction and then move to implementation. Maybe then, if anyone's got any questions about the demographic profile, we could do that after implementation and then go back to those other chapters.
That's fine. I just offer a short commentary. Having gone through the plan, I only had one major issue, which is what Timberley brought up in the last meeting. And what we do agree is, you know, the board disagrees with me and I'm not going to bring it up again. But I think there is a, an intrinsic benefit to trying to get this before the public with some, not urgency, but with some quickness. Because I'm nervous that the public will forget what this is between the T-PAG process and actually putting it in front of them. So I would urge my fellow commissioners to have that in mind, too. I mean, of course, if you disagree with me, you might not feel that way, but.
Also, the Select Board, a year ago, a year ago, we presented about the town plan to the Select Board because we thought we were ready of some, in some way. And their request to us was to bring it to them sooner rather than later. Because once they start getting into November, they start hitting into their budget stuff. And they get very busy and overwhelmed with lots of meetings. So the only thing I say about that is so that we can be in a timely manner, which is what you just were saying.
Yeah.
So that we can have our public hearings, warn our public hearings, and then make any adjustments we need to make and then present to the Select Board so that they can warn their meetings. Because I really want to honor their, their requests.
Yeah, and I think it makes what T-PAG did more effective. The sooner, the closer in time it is. It's been a long time, but still.
Yeah, thanks, James.
And just for your guys' information, this, this whole document, it's advisory in most cases. It's consulted with certain zoning applications in other instances, but it's not the law of the land, what's written here. We're trying to codify the wishes of the town looking forward five years. So, like, the thing that I don't like was what Jim brought up earlier, this residential area between the co-op and Three Stones. But just because that's in here, it's not actually going to change the law. And I can grind that axe if it's ever, ever on the, on the table. You know, make some banners and bring some protesters to the meeting or something. So with that said, Rod, let's proceed as you suggested.
Okay. So the introduction, people.
That was a joke about the protesters, by the way, guys.
I guess I actually have to say, I didn't actually read the introduction. I was busy looking, trying to.
Well, do you want to, why don't we move on?
Different and the same on a different chapter. That was where I was looking to see.
So Timberley?
Well, I found two grammatical errors.
Oh, that's excellent.
I can, I can.
Yeah, why don't you pass those on later? Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I, I think it, I think it works. You know, I don't, my, my suggestions probably don't, aren't a better alternative. It's just a different alternative. So I'm just going to keep them to myself for the sake of, for the sake of saving time. So, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, the user's guide there on page three. And then also mentioning that the town plan is lengthy and not expected to necessarily be read front to back. I think that's, you know, a good explanation there.
It's not?
There'll be special prizes for those who can answer questions from each of the chapters.
I liked it as well. I liked particularly the tone of it.
Good.
I have, I have a couple of grammatical things as well, including a triple negative, in a sense.
Whoa.
That's a positive and a ah. Wow. Which one? Tell me now which one.
Let's see. Right under the illustration.
Yep.
There's a few outward tons of growth, such as new residential commercial development does not mean that Brattleboro is not changing or that our opportunities for protecting and extending our quality of life are not also changing.
I take full responsibility for that sentence. And it was, it was typed, it was typed into a delirious state. But, okay, actually.
Comes from down under, I think.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here is a very complicated thing, actually. So if you, I'm glad that you, your eyes settle on that. Because I, I'm trying to say something that's a little odd. What I would say is, in the broad spectrum of planning, the planning profession and planning activity, most people think of planning or the purpose of planning to guide growth and to guide development. And the, the point that I'm trying to make here is that even in a setting such as Brattleboro, where there are very, very low levels of development and growth, things are still changing. So the demographic profile, for instance, is one thing that's changing. Or the future, you know, opportunities for businesses and households are also changing, right? Against the backdrop of very little change. And so what I'm trying to get at is, because I think what the plan is attempting to do in one way is to address that low-growth issue and say, and restate or state more clearly what the community wants to see Brattleboro turn into or, but also remain. So there's, there's things about Brattleboro that we cherish and we want to sustain. And then there are things that we want to work harder on. And that's what that sentence is really trying to get at. So it does have a triple negative kind of ring. Well, actually, it's technically a triple negative, you're right.
I'll give you some suggestions for that paragraph and the one following.
Okay.
Otherwise, I thought it was swapped.
Great, thank you.
I have one more comment. If I could jump in again.
Oh, yeah.
On page four, under public input process. Before the number, you list the five reoccurring themes.
Yep.
Those are important. And I was wondering if just maybe that sentence that says reoccurring themes, you're probably trying to, you do have room, because on page five you have extra space. So if that could be just sort of either put in a box under that paragraph, just reoccurring themes that were heard from these meetings included. And I think those five things are really important and just need to kind of stand out.
Oh, so you want it to pop more? Oh, so you want it in a box?
Yeah, or whatever, however you see. Or a box that's just in the middle of that page. Just that, that little section right there. As part of that paragraph, it just.
Okay. How do other people feel about?
Because people might, you know, not read the whole introduction, but a little, you know, if somebody's scanning through, they'll see a box and that would be, those themes were quite important.
Okay. Other people are comfortable with that? Going for the box?
Yeah. I just realized, Carolina, that you're the only commissioner that was on the board when this started. Do you believe that?
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
You get the gold-plated cover.
Okay, excuse that little dalliance. Liz, are you pretty content?
About the introduction? Are we just starting with the introduction?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Jim, you got anything?
On the introduction specifically?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm not crazy about the graphic.
Well.
Crazy about the what?
You're not crazy about the graphic.
It just seems a little.
Oh, this one here?
It seems a little, I don't know, all those arrows just doesn't work. Other than that, I have no comment.
Is it the thickness of the arrows?
Yes, it's the thickness of the arrows, actually.
Okay.
And also, you know what? Now that I'm looking at this with the, with the draft underneath it, that also confuses it.
All right. Once that comes off, it gets, and it looks better in color, Jane.
Ah, I have no doubt it looks actually, no.
But the thickness of the arrows.
All right, so, okay.
Okay, so we agree about the thickness of the arrows. I know this is your guys' probably first time seeing this and we've all gone over it so much. It feels like we've been living with the thing. But do either of you guys have something you'd like to add about the introduction? And don't feel like you have to. I think it's a great piece, so.
I like it. I think it gets the job done.
Great.
Okay, so shall we look at implementation now?
Okay. So let me, yeah, let me, and let me try and handle it this way. So maybe we just want to keep account of a, of a version of, so if I make those changes, the grammatical changes, which I think doesn't.
I think we can all agree that grammatical changes can be appropriately made.
Right.
You know, whatever you and Liz or you and Karen or Timberley, excuse me, agree is good. I'm quite sure it would be good.
And probably Bill Gates at this point.
Yeah.
Sure, there was a green weekly line under some of it.
Well, in any case, if anybody on this commission disagrees, now's the time to say it. But stuff like that, I think efficiency should take precedence.
So then, so then, this is a yes?
Yeah.
We're done?
This is a yes, we're done.
Okay, great. All right.
One quick question. Do you think there's any value to, if, in that Hawke report, if there are more graphics? Considering that there are very few people who are going to read this entire thing, do you think there's any value to putting in more graphics so the point gets across more?
We're a bit, we're a bit graphic challenged and we'll probably, we'll install more graphics as we go along. Whether they come from Roger Hawke's report or not, you know, remains to be seen. But yeah, I think that, that, and that's, the text, we, in terms of the process, what we need to do is have the commissioners vote on the text as, as it's something that's ready to go forward to the public hearing. And then we have some time between that, that announcement and the actual preparation for the public hearing to do some of that work. And we're still waiting on some final versions of some maps that we've been working with Jeff Nugent from Wyndham Regional on as well. And then, again, between that step of the Planning Commission to the Select Board, we have yet more time to ensure that it becomes a more accessible document. And that's when we'll be working more busily with the graphic designer. And, and so one of our challenges right now is that we're not wanting to take too many daring steps with graphics because we now have a format for producing the graphics, which is a bit challenging, to be honest. So it's not, we're not going to whip out a quick Excel pie chart and have that lobbed in here. Because, for instance, the software that we're going to use to produce this won't take it.
Got it. I know you guys had iPad to be sure.
Right.
No, I was going to ask to Jack, maybe, I love to something here where you have, which says Brattleboro's a strong sense of place, rich heritage. I would say maybe diverse cultural richness, because a lot of different cultures coming and bringing different lands and things, maybe something like that.
We talk about that a little bit in the demographic profile. And I think it does get addressed in a couple of different places. I think it might also be one of those things where we set ourselves a goal to be more inclusive or, yeah.
Right, open to that. Because it does offer a lot of different varieties.
Right. Okay, great, thank you. So now I'm ready for implementation, if you're up, James.
Implementation. Anybody, you know what, just, I'm going to, I'm going to adopt as my own system zigzag. So since we started as Carolina last time, let's start on this end this time.
And this is the complete implementation thing?
As it stands now, yes.
From the other, although it's put together a little strangely.
Oh, oh, yeah, that thing?
Yeah, you can do the back page, the reverse pages.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Copy it the other way, but that's all right.
It's format, it's, it's okay. We can figure that out.
Yeah, when, yeah, when it goes in the book, I would appreciate it.
Oh, yeah.
Mark, I confess that this is difficult for me and I've been looking at this plan for a long time. But, well, the system that I invented is the system. So you're up first.
That's fine. Carolina already mentioned it. That was all I was going to bring up.
For, I think so.
Yeah. Last time we only got even or odd pages, so.
You see, at least half of this you've never seen before.
When I, when I looked at it, what is this?
It's, it's a neurotic thing to do with the photocopy, to be really honest.
Oh, I'm sure it is. And I, I think it's something that can be easily ironed out. That was all I thought.
These are just all the action steps from within the plan?
Yes, yes, and so that.
I think they're a little bit foiled, Dan.
Yes. They, the, the, this precise language of each action step doesn't necessarily survive, but the.
A phrase about what.
The phrase does, and then also, the chapter and poli, the part that identifies the policy is also seriously truncated.
Yeah, chapter, policy, then the actions, and then.
Right. The, the one thing that, I don't know, I'm sure we discussed this the last time, but I think is important to bring up is. And it sort of reinforces James's comment earlier on, so this is not the law of the land for Brattleboro, just because it's in the town plan. And one of the challenges with previous versions of the town plan is that many, you know, great, genuinely great ideas could get identified and mentioned and described, but without actually pinning it to who's going to be responsible for implementing it and what the implications from a budgetary and management standpoint those ideas create, then it undermines the buy-in of other boards and commissions to the town plan, in particular the select board and the broader community, so the effort here is to. By summarizing like this, and I, and I have to say, I appreciate Liz's work on this enormously, because this was something that Sue and I had sort of struggled with in terms of how to sort of tie all these things together. So what we've done here is identify each one of the action steps, and then identify who's responsible for it, whether it's an ongoing priority, a long-term priority, or a short-term priority. Short-term refers to the five-year implementation of the plan, and then the commitment of resources, and then the land, and whether it has a land use regulation implications are the two things that we sort of added on there in the end, which we also think is really useful for people who may not spend then the time reading every word of the plan, but be able to go here and figure out the scope of the plan. So that, that's the purpose of the, of the very lengthy table, and then in an ideal world, this would constitute sort of at least part of a board or a commission's annual review, so we've not done it because we've been so focused on doing the town plan for so long, but way back in the beginning with Kevin as chair, we would set up, we would actually have meetings, quite lengthy meetings, discussing what the priorities of the planning commission for the coming year were going to be, what we were going to try and work on, and set goals in terms of, and timelines in terms of what was going to get done. So that's true of the planning commission, and it's true of many other boards and commissions as well. So this document would form the basis for some regularized review of progress towards implementing the town plan itself. So.
Gary, any thoughts on the implementation?
No, I'm, I'm still studying.
Yeah, this is a.
Something I really have to still talk and speak intelligently about, more insp, I need to really.
This is tough to just jump right in. Just so I don't forget, there's a spelling error in page nine of this 1.4. Wetlands is misspelled.
Page nine?
Yeah. It says Wirtlands. I'll forget it if I don't put it on the record.
Well, that might have been a modified kind of thing, you know.
Oh, and the top wide life, wide life corridors, is that correct?
There's a double L there.
Oh, nice. The L is on the wrong side of the D.
Yeah, that's right, it's a.
Widlif, it sounds like an English private school. So, otherwise.
Widlif and Wirtlands.
Widlif and Wirtlands, they both sound kind of stodgy.
Wirtlands is German, Wirtlands, you know that.
Yeah, the Wirtlands.
At 2.1, educate, education is its education.
Yeah, obviously, a bit more education.
Somebody was in his way at night.
People was Sue trying to get at the door.
See, I'm violating my own suggestion not to make little nitpicking suggestions, and now I'm going to shut up.
All right.
In an effort to follow my own suggestion. Uh, Jim?
What section are we talking about?
Just implementation.
Yeah, no, anything that, pretty much everything's been said already.
This is kind of a mechanical chapter, so why don't we, why don't I just open the floor? If anybody's got something to add or, or suggestion, we just speak now.
I just want to say the opening two paragraphs is sets a nice tone, it talks about planning as a continuous process, and I think that's important, as we're noting here, it's not cut and dry, and this is not. And then, the implementation matrix is explained, and then there'll be abbreviations on that for the next page two. And it's also stated in the beginning, the second paragraph, that it's meant to serve as a guide for the boards and committees and to the town, and I think that's, well, you know, well included, well included, I guess would be the word, so that people understand.
Anybody else?
Great.
Okay, let's move along to our demographic profile.
That's right about.
That's appendix A, it should be on the bottom.
It's an appendix.
So.
Is that greatly different, Dan? Another one here.
No, I don't think it's clearly different.
Anybody have anything to add here? Or take away or suggest?
I have a question.
Yep.
So the demographic profile says appendix A.
Yes, and I'm.
And then about eight, seven pages, five pages in.
There's another appendix A.
There's, yes, okay.
Arts and culture inventory, right. So we have some numbering things to do for the appendix. I should say, now that I'm looking at this more carefully, all the appendices are part of this section, so now runs through. So what you should have is demographic profile on top, which runs for five pages. Arts and culture inventory, which is also referred to as appendix A, which clearly is going to get fixed. Appendix B, historic sites and districts listed in the state and national register, and so that connects with the natural resources and chapter and so forth. Appendix D, natural resources inventory. And that runs for six pages, and that's it so far.
So you got two As and no Cs.
Right. So I think it's pretty easy how we're going to fix this.
You need a report card.
And the whole natural resources inventory was more, or is it just some? There's these, um. Existing trails and all that stuff I didn't see in the current one we got passed out. Is that going to be included in that?
This is the version that Sue worked on with the conservation commission, reflects comments from here and from them as well. I think that the question as to the information concerning trails.
I mean, since it's a.
It comes up in the natural resources chapter, and then there are other resources for for people who, you know, seeking information on trails, so there's, there's specific maps and so forth, and so there'll be a.
So that listing of them would be necessary to have?
No. Part of the problem is, is that many of the trails are actually, are across private land, and so there's questions about the extent of publicity that would be given to them, so.
Oh, okay. So that page won't be, that'll be deleted.
So it'll, it'll, the idea is that it will be as you, as you see it here.
Yeah.
Right.
Anything more on demographic profile or the appendices within?
Now, what says the free reduced lunches is only these schools are included, not the other schools, like early education, early head start schools, or the other schools out, this falls under the UHS, correct? Wouldn't that be on there there? Free lunch, reduced lunch.
Where are you?
On page four, it says, on the poverty, free reduced lunches, you have academy, green streets, Oak Road, Brattleboro area middle school, and the UHS.
Right.
So the other one.
It doesn't include head start, you're right.
No preschool program.
And it doesn't include preschool.
Okay.
Head start is, the eligibility for head start is income related or need related in other ways? And I don't believe we collect data on the pre-K programs for free and reduced lunches.
That's part of Wyndham.
Well.
Head start is WSESU.
Yeah, all this is Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union data, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, so we got what you see as the three big chapters, I think, nailed down.
So, so the appendices are okay?
I think it's, I think it's great. You know, I kind of wish I knew there was a town plan when I moved here, I wasn't even aware of it, there's really a lot of cool information.
It's kind of a funny thing like that.
So why don't we just talk about anything that anybody wants to add, and who knows, maybe we can, maybe we can find the end zone tonight and get this thing warned before the select board, where I'm sure somebody will find something that we missed, but.
Okay.
I'd like to try to do that.
Okay, so. How do you want to do this? Do you want to just?
I just like people to say if they have.
Jump in on anything?
Issues that they feel like we need to address here.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of things, first, I really like, we had suggested, and I really felt that we needed something about historic preservation, and that's been added, and I think it's really well done.
Where's it added?
Under historic and scenic resources. And, uh, that's really nice.
Yeah.
About a potential for an ordinance on page five.
Say that one more time, Liz, sorry, catch him up.
We had had a discussion in historic and scenic resources, I thought that perhaps we could benefit from the suggestion of a historic preservation ordinance to protect the structures.
Hey, that's a good idea.
It's now here in the report, and it's very nicely written on page five.
Yep. So that's the last paragraph on page five, just before all the bullet items. Enacting a local historic district would provide protection, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so really, it's that whole page, it sets it up nicely, and it explains what, what an ordinance would and wouldn't do, and you know, we can obviously debate that at a different time when we're discussing ordinances, but in terms of the master plan, I think it's a nice addition, because I think otherwise it was kind of scenic-heavy and not his, not balanced with historic structures.
Right, the built form didn't have as much attention.
Uh, you just need to reopen the Creamery Bridge, and I'll be happy.
And then, and then with the rest of the document, I was basically driving myself crazy to make sure that all the policies were mentioned in the text and the outline, and and then I thought, fine, it's great.
Good.
Yeah, on the, um, policy two.
Which chapter?
Of the same historic and scenic resources, the actions have been, under policy two, were, were kind of rewritten a little bit, and taken some feedback from us, and they came out really well.
Right.
Now, I would, I would like us to talk freely, especially about stuff that we don't like. I think it's important we ferret that out if we're thinking about pushing this forward, or stuff we're uncomfortable with. Is there any something that's like eating at people? Jim?
So this is not eating at me, but I have a question about it. In the energy, in the energy section.
Yeah.
We talk about various things that we want to do, and we also talk about it in housing, under implementing PACE among other things. And I just saw something that came out fairly recently of the towns in Brattleboro that I implemented that have adopted PACE. We are not one of them. I called Gary, who was working on that, and he never called me back, so I'm just wondering. We, we have it in here as a goal and something we want to pursue, and it appears that we did not, and I just want to see if that is something that we want to take out of there now that we haven't pursued it? Why didn't we pursue it? Does anybody know?
I don't regard it as a done deal, I think is the way I would say it.
What is the story? How did we not get it? Was it a town meeting thing?
Yes. There's a couple of, let me, let me sort of break it out as simply as I can, because it's not a very simple story. The idea for PACE didn't originate in Vermont, but Vermont is at the sort of the front of states that want to adopt PACE. PACE stands for, um.
It's actually in your somewhere.
Yeah.
Property assessed.
Property assessed, yeah, and the idea here is that the two key features are that, um, property, residential property owners could use a finance, basically finance the implementation of renewable energy or energy efficiency measures on their homes, and then pay it off basically effectively through their tax bill, and so the way that would be done is that the property owner would be, you know, would, would see on their quarterly tax bill and their annual tax bill how much they're paying off of a loan to allow them to install energy efficiency measures or the renewable energy production. It has received, has strong support at the level of the state legislature, and most of the legal issues that play out at the federal level have been resolved, most of that's to do with the fact that with most residential mortgages being backed by Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, that they are typically first in line if the mortgage is in default, and the question of the legal standing of a municipality vis-à-vis Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac came up in terms of if the municipality also had a lien over the property for unpaid amounts to do with the change, that, you know, the installation of energy efficiency measures or renewable energy, then it would dislodge Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac from being in first position, which they weren't willing to go along with. So, so the first hurdle that had to be crossed was in fact the federal one in terms of federal regulations in the way banks write mortgages. And the next one was a little bit more arcane and about really what private banks would do in these sort of circumstances, and would they be compelled to do it? Or would they be able to decline to do it, and so on and so forth? And then the third one was more specific to Brattleboro, and that is that when the town enters into a tax, a tax agreement, or a tax abatement, or a tax stabilization plan with a taxpayer, the precise details of that are voted on individually at town meeting, right? And that's okay if we're talking about, you know, a handful of organizations, such as not-for-profits or something, and the information is not particularly personal, um, you know, in other words, it's not, you're not working through the entrails of some, you know, individual homeowner's mortgage. But the way our charter is written presents difficulties in actually processing PACE without using town meeting to vote on each individual agreement. Right? So it begs the question as to whether we need to have a charter change. My understanding is that the select board is supportive of the charter change to achieve this goal. So we're a little bit behind the eight ball in terms of adopting PACE, and that's a, that issue, if I've described it correctly, I'm not sure I have entirely, but the issue to do with town meeting and the way our charter is framed puts Brattleboro in a literally one and only situation with PACE.
Okay, so it sounds like we're still, as a community, we're still in the process of trying to do this, so we're listing it as a priority, and it genuinely is a priority in the community, and we're just working through the process.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I, so I think the way it's addressed and handled, it's a bit murky in a plan, which accurately represents the exact status of the situation.
The other thing is that, as we, as, as the implementation chapter said, I mean, a town plan is a pros, ongoing process. So we may write things here, like PACE, that we want to work on it, but in two years' time, we may find that it's not going to happen or something, and that's just all part of the looking at all the different actions that we're proposing now, this time, they're really all explorations of what we'd like to see.
Cool. Okay, thanks, Jim. Anybody else have something that they feel like we got to talk about?
Well, as far as with the, I don't know if that's something you can talk about now, transportation sidewalk.
Anything.
I'm a strap hanger myself, the sensation in New York. I travel the beeline constantly, and then out to Walmarts and all, and I, I think that's an issue I, I've dealt with myself on a personal basis, also with other people down at the transit. Knowing bus schedules and times and all that, there used to be a timetable up there in the transit, where I happened to search for one, hoping one shows up, and asking others what time the bus arrives, and then I guess that's something, I guess we gotta, I don't know if you meet with the transit people themselves as far as scheduling is concerned. Between this gap, I, I would go to Walmart, say 11 o'clock, the next bus is not until 3:33.
Um, do we still, do we still have a say in the beeline?
Yeah, um.
It's just so much to.
The town contracts the bus service to a regional transit provider called Connecticut River Transit, as you probably know, Gary. And then, uh, they recently went through a plan review, which includes their entire operation and their schedule for Brattleboro. Some adjustments were made to the schedule for Brattleboro in an effort to service more customers and to address the issue of the Walmart being relocated further into Kingsdale, which adds substantially to the trip time. So there's a new schedule out, basically, and the town was consulted and involved in that process, and, and the regional planning commission was also involved in that process, and so the outcome is, but the, ultimately, the new service and schedule that goes where that is approved. approved by V-Trans, and they've approved it.
Now, how often do they do surveys with strap hangers? People ride buses about quality, time, transportation.
There was a public process, there was a public process associated with that review that the bus company, Connecticut River Transit undertook themselves directly. It did involve riders' feedback as well.
What's the relation between that and the Mover?
The Mover is a different bus company.
Right.
And that's based in...
Wilmington?
Wilmington, yeah. And it services Matt Snow.
The Mover's free, is the B-line free?
I don't know if that, I don't quite heard their most, I'm saying they're looking for doing, but some will be changing prices and all. I don't think the Bellas Falls one, that was a dollar, where it used to be free.
Right.
I don't know what the cost effectiveness is going to be in a lot of other... But like I said, I ride it constantly. I'm always down at the transit, listen to people, I ride the bus all the time, trying to make connections and all that scheduling. A lot of people deal with that with work, going to work because, you know, people work late night, and that's something, I mean, I don't, maybe we can meet with them and maybe from feedback.
I think once they've set their schedule, they're pretty stuck with it for a whole lots of reasons because it's from that, they figure out how many buses they need and how many drivers they need, and there's a whole bunch of things that sort of build on that. So it's actually pretty difficult for them to make a running change, I guess. But yeah, there are certainly, I can, if you want to talk later, I can give you the contact details for people.
Right, I think Stacy, that handles that, yeah.
Are there two different lines and companies because they take different routes?
Yeah.
There are two routes, the so-called Blue and the so-called Red Line, run by the B-line, which is now operated by Connecticut River Transit.
Yep.
And they have, they overlap to some extent, but they're separate routes. And then, and Gary's probably better at explaining this than I am. And then there's also the Mover, which services...
Now extended to Bennington.
Yes, right. So you can get, theoretically, you can get from Bennington to Brattleboro on a bus now, which is pretty good.
Well, the incredible thing is, it's free.
Yeah.
That is amazing. Those are regional initiatives?
They receive funding, they receive a combination of state and federal funding through V-Trans, and the commitment of V-Trans to public transit, basically bus companies, is pretty high compared to other states.
Gary, is the B-line free?
B-line, no, it's a dollar.
Yep.
That's a dollar, the Bellas Falls, 53 is a dollar. It used to be free, but then, you know, I guess due to course of the standard of maintaining the buses, economics involved with that, with gas prices and all that, and, you know, it's understandable, you know, in the hard times that they had to compensate.
Well, it's both great, but I just, my daughter takes the Mover every day, and I asked her how much it was, and she said it was free, and I was like, wow.
For now, as far as I know, for now, since I don't think there's going to be any changes around then, but it's good now. They go into Hinsdale.
Yep.
I guess that's going to be a test run to see from there, maybe they might, from before it was going into Winchester for others, for seniors coming into shopping at Walmart, but that's just in the planning stage also. What they want to see, test run to see how this run goes. As far as that is now, I guess my second thing, my second question was in dealing with sidewalks, accessibility of putting your road. It's definitely something I don't know if it's been looked at. We do have a nice bike lane. I don't see too many people riding it, actually, myself. But as far as sidewalk accessibility for those who have carriages, wheelchairs, even with a little child walking up down there.
Are you referring to the section from downtown to the Marina or the Marina up to...
Well, when I walk as far as probably to the point as I think once I get to, say, I think Copper Hill Grill, it stops.
Yeah.
Grass, 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 sidewalk, grass, grass, grass.
Yeah.
Like, it's like Morse code.
Yeah.
And it's going up there in the winters, and when you have a carriage, I see people struggling.
Yeah, it's hard.
It's something I think should have been looked into as far as the sidewalk accessibility for buses to drop off people to, to the handovers, to the stores and other places.
If you look on page nine, it's in there.
Yep.
Almost your exact...
Yep.
Complaint. So it is in here, I mean, along with a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, and I guess you guys addressed issues too, when we had these accidents in the past too.
Right.
Doesn't mean anything's going to happen because the plan is not binding, but it is in there.
It's good.
Right.
And then transportation is such a challenge in this area.
Yeah.
And then this cross in the streets, I do use the cross section, but, you know, you have people, maybe currency's not the biggest thing, but you hope to make the cross to the post office. You're doing like, you know, frauder.
Yeah. One of my other gripes is I'm getting rid of the crosswalk in front of the library.
Yeah.
Let's not get me started. Come on.
Someone must still cross there.
One meeting, and I've gotten three of my greatest hits in. Okay, so any other major gripes, things we feel need to be addressed before we ratify this document?
I have one quick question. Is there anything in here about the Brattleboro time trade?
The Brattleboro time trade?
Yeah.
No. Nothing in the plan.
Where would it fit?
It would...
Certainly could be under economic development.
You could go in economic development.
And the reason I ask, I actually signed up for this about two weeks ago, and when he was just talking about the fact that we needed a ride, I'm like, Brattleboro time trade has everything from Euclid lessons to somebody seeing you a bedtime story to landscape helping you move, if you need a ride. I mean, it's pretty incredible, and...
It's not, it's still not quite user-friendly, I'm working on it.
Yeah, yeah, but I think with more people who know how to...
It's hard to be acknowledged in the...
I don't know if it's in here or not, but I think it's a pretty valuable tool if people know how to use it, and if it has more users. I don't know.
Yeah, me too.
It's been a long time since I've lawbussed people.
Okay, so is there a website or something for them?
Yeah.
Is there a law bike?
Yeah.
I think it would be good if you...
Is it Brattleboro time trade?
Brattleboro time share?
Time trade.
Time trade. That would come up with something completely different.
It's not a barter system, it's based on time.
You can maybe add a few extra pages, right?
Maybe.
Well, usually they have a table and gallery walk.
Yeah, they have a table.
It doesn't, so they don't have like a currency, like there's one, there's a...
An hour for an hour.
Time for time, no, not a month.
Okay, so if I want to swap polishing your shoe, you know, if I offer to polish your shoes and you accept, you'll, you know, water my grass for an hour.
It's not person for person. If you need a service, you can put it on there, or if you want to give a service, you can put it on there. So there's give and there's get on their website.
Okay.
Like somebody came and raked leaves in my yard for an hour last fall, and I baked for fundraisers at the Welcome Center when different organizations...
Oh, I see. So it's not a...
But it's not based on money, it's just based on time. And so if you were...
Time share.
A doctor could barter, I mean, not barter, could give his services, but it wouldn't be for a dollar amount, it would be for a time amount.
I find that highly unlikely.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Okay, I'll...
Very good thing, actually.
Jim, you have?
I do have one that is not in here, and I know it's late, so I don't know, but this really is something that came up with the Wyndham Regional Commission Energy Committee.
So we back in energy?
No, actually, I'm in housing.
Okay.
But it came up with the Energy Committee, and I think it might be important to, might be important to get in here. And that is basically, we have no, in Vermont, other than up in Burlington, we have no heating source that is not 100% dependent on oil. Because even compressed natural gas that we have delivered to our houses is a derivative of oil.
We forgot about wood.
What about wood?
Well, we have wood, yeah.
Wood pellets.
So what do they have different in Burlington? Added to that?
They have natural gas.
They have natural gas.
They have natural gas that comes from the street. But our natural gas, which is CNG, is actually a derivative of oil. So other than wood, but with wood, even with wood, you can't, you can't get a mortgage without a backup system of some central heating system. And that is a, to me, seems like a big liability and issue in our housing stock because, well, you know, oil is probably going to continue to go up, and it has gone up significantly just in the last two years. And I think that affects affordability.
Yeah.
And it affects the ability of landlords to actually put in improvements and things like that because everything is going basically to oil at this point. So I don't know, it feels to me like, because we have a lot of things in here about affordability, and I think it's going to continue to play a really big...
What was the conversation at the Wyndham Regional?
Well, the conversation at the Wyndham was basically recognizing that the only, basically the only heat source we have in Vermont is oil. And actually, right now, it is cheaper per square foot or per cubic foot in Vermont and in many other northeastern places. It's actually cheaper to heat with electricity right now than it is with oil. Per cubic foot, because electricity is actually at all-time lows in the last like 30 years, and oil is at near-all-time highs.
Yeah, that's true.
Just like the 70s, huh?
So it's actually cheaper to heat with electricity right now than it is with oil. But nobody that rents, if you see that as a renter, you're like, don't want to heat with electricity.
Well, the Brooks House was all heated by electricity. People screamed and hollered, Tom. It's not going to be anymore.
So you'd like to see something in housing about that?
Yes, because it goes directly to affordability.
Right.
And I mean, I don't know if you'd like me to write something up for...
Would that be to explore certain something or others?
Well, I think at least needs to be recognized for two reasons. Number one, whether it's homeowners or, you know, single-family homeowners or landlords, it's going to affect our ability to, you know, because a lot of, there's basically two primary things talked about in the housing section. One is affordability, and the second is housing quality. Almost everything is a derivative of that in one way or another. And basically, the high cost of our heating is going to continue to be a negative impact on both of the major issues that we have.
I suggest that Jim write something up.
I'll write something up.
We have a confidence in him to let him loose.
And so just to locate it a little bit for everybody, I'm assuming, Jim, it's going to be an action under policy number three.
I'm not even sure there's much action that we can take. But I think it should be recognized because if we want to meet these other objectives of better housing quality and affordability...
Right.
We at least need to recognize that that issue exists. I don't know if there's anything, I mean, world markets are world markets.
Well, I guess, I mean, which may explain why it's not in there. I mean, and it doesn't come up in energy for similar kinds of reasons. I mean, what I'd say is, and what's sort of interesting, and maybe Mark can shed some light on this. If there's been a transition in the market in the last couple of years going along with the increase in fuel oil prices, it's that most of the fuel oil distributors in town or that service the community have begun to actually service or support other forms of home heating. So I don't know if all of them do, but my understanding is that they are shifting towards delivering wood pellets for wood pellet stoves, for instance, and that there's been increases in the efficiency of wood pellet-fueled boilers so that that becomes the dominant, the dominant means of heating your home, and the backup might be fuel oil or it might be electric. But if you're home and you're around, it's wood pellets. And the model that you could extend this to, so if you think about it from a business standpoint, if you've got a customer that you've been delivering fuel oil to, it's potentially, it's easy to encourage them to switch to a wood pellet boiler or something similar. And then if it's, you know, your business is maintaining trucks and drivers and routes to deliver the fuel with, so it's, you know, one day it's fuel oil, the next day it could be wood pellets. And in fact, in Scandinavia, they have actually retrofitted fuel oil trucks, so the exact trucks, so that they don't carry fuel oil anymore in the tanker, they carry wood pellets, and instead of it being pumped into a tank, they use a blower and they blow it into a hopper, the wood pellets. And so it's exactly the same truck, just with a blower instead of a pump.
Can you do that?
Is a central wood pellet, wood pellet system acceptable for a mortgage? I don't know.
I don't know.
I think it might be in this state, actually.
Yes, I think so.
It is for some insurers and lawyers.
Oh, it's the insurance company.
The, in my experience, they work in concert. And to speak to your point about Scandinavia, it's happening right now. There's a company called Pelergy out of Manchester that's using converted propane trucks.
There you go.
And...
Oh, yeah, because they can pressurize the tank. Rock on.
Yeah, it's...
So it really pushes it.
Yeah, it's happening. There's installations right here in town.
Oh, yeah? Cool.
And...
I think my neighbor has one.
Yep. Going back a little bit, any of us as energy providers, we've had to diversify in order to survive. And you're right, Jim, it is cheaper in some municipalities to heat with electricity. We've installed more mini-split heat pump AC units in the past year than we have in the previous five years combined. Now, some of that is technology.
Right.
Yeah.
That'll depend on the heating unit, because I know mine's my little...
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And the consumer has become more and more educated. If I go to the hardware store and buy a baseboard electric unit, it's going to cost me a fortune. I do my research and buy a mini-split unit, it's going to be pretty economical. This is actually one of the chapters I glossed over, just to avoid bias, given what I do.
Housing or energy?
What's that?
Housing or energy?
Energy, yeah. Actually, the, the chapter looks pretty good to me, but exactly like I said, I just, I glossed over it to avoid any bias, given what I do and what we're working on.
You don't want to put houses in Brattleboro will heat with Coda and Coda in the next five years?
No. I'd like to.
Those sponsors.
All right.
Okay. So are we at a point where we can give this thing?
I just have one more thing.
Sorry. Go, go, go.
On page 11 of the energy plan, it talks about all the volunteers who committed to complete free energy audits. I thought we were going to mention that there are numerous businesses in town...
That do energy, yes.
That do energy audits and whatever.
So you said it was page 11? Yeah, okay.
Wasn't there something in housing about the South Coast?
South Coast, friends of the South Coast.
So did we decide that I'm not going to write anything about the cost of oil because it doesn't really...
I thought we decided you would.
Okay, I'm fine to do it, I just want to know what the assignment is. But also, on page 12...
Are you in housing or energy?
Housing, under homelessness by the numbers. In the very top one, is that supposed to be 217?
I'm sorry, hang on a second.
Under in-housing, page 12, graphic figure two.
Oh, because it's got that funky thing going on?
Yeah, and the rest, all the rest of the numbers are 1, 2, 25, 30.
I think that the seven, I think the seven is aberrant. I think it should be 21.
Oh, no.
No, you think it's 217?
Well, what is Wyndham County, average number of homeless adults in overflow shelter per night?
I think it's 217.
What is the overflow shelter?
The overflow shelter is run by the Brattleboro Drop-In Center, it's at the Baptist Church.
So Brattleboro, Mid-Morningside Shelter. So we've got one number for the county, and then the rest of these numbers are basically for Brattleboro.
The overflow is for the drop-in center. Morningside is a more of a family-oriented shelter.
Yeah.
And then, so these are the two shelters in Brattleboro.
Right, the overflow's usually run into Windsor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the top number is basically a county number.
Yes.
So basically, we've got anywhere from 10 to, we've got about 10% of the homeless population, a little bit more.
Yeah, because I know at the drop-in center, they serve the region, and they go around, and tend to the need of the homeless in that region.
Okay. So maybe it's just a type of graphical thing to get that 7 to...
That 7 to look like the other numbers?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that number was 21 or 217.
That's fine, that's good. That's a good...
Sue and I spoke to Melinda at the drop-in center, the late one.
Liz, did you say what you were going to say?
I did.
Okay.
Great.
So what do we think, guys?
I just had one thing, and it was in education right on the front. I think we should include to maintain or actually reconnect with existing state facilities. maintain or actually reconnect with existing state, uh, facilities such as, uh, uh, the apprenticeship programs for plumbers, electricians, and so on and so forth.
Oh, um, that actually gets addressed in economic development under workforce, uh, workforce development and workforce, yeah.
Maybe we can stick a citation or a reference in there?
I think we should, I think we should improve it by having a link.
Yep, yeah, so it's cross-reference.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
We gonna do this?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh.
Poor Gary. We've been here for so many years, now he's not here.
We can call this the Gary, the Gary Goodemote Memorial Town Plan.
I'm not sure memorial for Gary, he's not dead.
In memoriam of his stint as Chair of the Planning Commission.
VCTV and he'll see.
Oh, I hope not.
Yeah, really. I think he, I think he let me know that he wasn't going to be doing that.
Okay, so all those, uh, well, I need a motion, I'm sorry, to give this final draft of the town plan to the... What are we doing exactly, Rod?
You are passing a motion that, um, approves this draft of the town plan as the text to go forward for the public hearing.
Okay, so I think the motion.
Might as changes that are grammatical and, and take bold and that stuff.
Okay, so let me think about this, so you could frame it as, um, making the, um, making, uh.
We can't make it easier. Here, allow me, I think I can. Um, so.
I move that, that the final draft version we have in our hands tonight on July 9th, all the updates, um, be given forward for, uh, to be warned for public hearing, um, for the planning commission with whatever day notice is necessary.
I think that's great. Any second?
Can I just make a friendly, can I just make a friendly amendment to that one? Can, I'm not sure if Carolina said it, but.
Are you allowed to offer friendly?
Well, I'm giving you advice, somebody else is going to do it up there.
Okay.
Um.
See, I'm keeping a tight ship up here.
Yeah. That, uh.
Yeah, you have 15 seconds.
That this draft of the town plan be approved for, you know, as the text for the public hearing of the town, for town plan, including the minor, uh, amendments suggested tonight.
Carolina?
All right, so moved, I move it that way.
Okay, we got a second, I think, from Gary.
All right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, any questions?
Wow.
And I think we should recognize that this is really Gary's achievement, and, uh, it's sad that he's not here, but a lot of his work got us to where we are, so. Gary, if you're out there, thank you.
If you're here.
This one's for you.
Yeah, now, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, I move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.